We'll call a meeting to order. Anyone's recording, would they make it known? I don't know how we can tell in this venue. Preliminary business, Master Millwork. Who is this?
No, you got, it's Coastal Cultivars.
Yeah, I'm looking at the old minutes, sorry. Previous, previous agenda. Looking at minutes. Did we have approval of the minutes on that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Go ahead, I just sent them out.
All right, then we'll go to Coastal Cultivars. Let me get back to you guys.
Now, in Coastal Cultivars, a insurance bond for $300,000 was submitted for their work to complete the roadway, the subdivision roadway in the at the end of Patterson's Brook Road. But the, the timing on it was it would bond term was, would close as of March 5th, 2021. So they submitted a change rider on it that extends it to November 11th, 2021.
And the reason for the, the extension?
Our request so that they'd have enough time to actually do the work.
Ken, do you know if they've started anything out there?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Because I've had no calls to go out and inspect anything.
Hey Ken, this is Brian at GAF.
Yeah, Brian, would you have to, for us on this?
Yeah, they haven't started any work where they're still working through their permitting process. They just received their license from the CCC. So now they're back before you to get approval for this. And then we'll be in to get mylar signed and other approvals. So they are moving ahead, but no physical work has started yet.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that.
Yep.
I'm going to squeak you door, but I got a glue in where I can see the screen better.
Brian, the basic reason for the extension is, is that because of the licensing delays, they just need more time.
Correct. We just need to add some time on, on the far end of it. And we're still getting final approvals in place, tonight being one of those pieces of the puzzle. So yeah, yeah, just to extend the timeframe on the end.
Are you back in place, George?
Yep. Any questions, any more questions of the board? Would you care to make a motion or?
Seems pretty straightforward to me. I make a motion that we that we approve the, the bond term change to November 1st.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
You should be approving the whole bond as well. And you should be approving the whole bond. Because you didn't do it before, because of this, waiting for this rider.
And what's the dollar amount on that, Ken?
$300,000.
So let me withdraw their earlier motion then and and restate that I make a motion that we approve the $300,000 bond and the new date of November 20, was it 21, Brian?
21, yep.
Of November 20, 2021.
And did I miss, what, what type of bond are we talking about here?
It's an insurance bond.
Okay. So a new motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Mike. Russell?
Hi.
I'll make the vote official, although I'm not sure an associate has a vote on that, sorry. Passed unanimously. Ken, can you help me up on the agenda here? I'm having a little trouble back finding it.
Yeah, you got, next one is, is 10-20 Anthony and Ann Antonellis Definitive Subdivision Plan. Old Onset Road, map 14 lot B.
Now, we did open that prior and, and continue to this date.
That's right. You opened it and continued.
So we don't need any announcements or and who is representing them at this?
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering here for the Antonellis.
Very good. What was yours?
Okay, thank you. What this is, this is a one lot definitive subdivision approval. The lot as it exists doesn't have adequate frontage for the zone. It's properties located in the R30 zone. Needs 30,000 square feet of area and 150 feet of frontage. It has just over, or just under 130 feet of frontage. So we're preparing or in filing this one lot definitive subdivision to create adequate frontage to make this a buildable lot. The lot contains just over five acres in the R30 zone. The neighborhood, if you've been down there, is a mix of older homes, you know, some of them approaching 80 years old. Many of them built in the 80s. And they're on anywhere from 10,000 to 30,000 square foot lots. So this would be one of the larger developed lots in the area. We did receive Charlie's comment letter. I do appreciate him getting that prepared so quickly. And we will, just having received that this afternoon, so we will prepare, prepare a response to his comments. And get those addressed with plan revisions or narrative responses. So that's the purpose of this one lot definitive subdivision. And I have, I think I see Mr. Fielding logged on. We have had a number of discussions with him. He owns the Cranberry Boggs behind us. And he's the one with the rights to the Woods Road and so the plan revisions we've made, we try to make it pretty clear that we're conveying any rights that Mr. Fielding has in that Woods Road right of way and just relocating that to this right of way that will be created. And we've had a number of discussions with him. I think we've satisfied all his concerns, but if that is him, he's available to comment on that.
Were we able to put this on the screen, Ken?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the most recent one, but I can put one of the
Can you get that up, Ken? You want to see if, want me to bring it up maybe?
If you can bring it up. I can't seem to find this, the 720 revision.
All right, let me see if I can find it.
Here we go.
There you go.
All right.
Two sheets.
Yeah, so you can see the size of the lot. It's a five acre lot. Again, in this neighborhood of 10,000 to 30,000 square foot lots. We're just trying to provide it with adequate frontage to make it a developable parcel.
And the waivers?
Yeah, in the package you were provided, there's a, a letter with a list of waivers. There quite a few of them. Because, you know, this is a one lot definitive subdivision. We have requested a number of waivers to do with construction standards and plan standards is you know, providing detailed profiles of the roadway. Radius is on the roadway, some drainage waivers. So there's, you know, two and a half pages of waiver requests. Which you have in your package. I don't believe you probably want to go through those in detail tonight through every one of them. Charlie received that package and, and he can comment on them for you, I suppose.
Yeah, there's, there's some things that are inconsistent between my letter and your waiver request because I wrote my letter up before knowing that they even existed. But yeah, one of them, the first one, I don't know that you really need. Because you do include a road profile on sheet two. So I don't think you need a waiver on that unless you're just getting a waiver for the, the scale, which I don't think is necessary.
Yeah, it's a pretty generic profile, but yeah, it is a profile, but it is pretty generic, but
It is, but it, it doesn't include some detail that it should have in order to be complete. I mean, you've got some grades there, but I assume they're existing grades at every station. And it doesn't show us any proposed grades and there are some changes between the existing grade and what you'd have for a finished surface.
Right, right. So since it's only a one lot subdivision, we threw that waiver in there because, you know, the grading's pretty simple for it. So rather than go through a detailed profile, we just added it as a waiver request.
Well, I think you need the elevations to know what to grade it to. The numbers that are there, I assume are based on the existing elevations of the ground.
Yeah, the plan view. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the profile view, I assume the numbers shown there are for the existing elevations.
Correct. And the plan view does show some grading on it.
It does, but it doesn't show where those grades are on the profile and, and I think it should show that. So I did have a couple of other comments with respect to that though and and the, the profile and your easement from Mr. Fielding if, if we could discuss that for a minute, George.
Sure. I was just trying to, uh I was just trying to see that. Does that just move it into this proposed subdivision roadway?
It, it does, but I had a couple of questions on it. It would appear that the 20-foot easement is what Mr. Fielding would get in exchange for the elimination of a portion of it which is outside or which is on the lot where they proposed to put the house. And they've moved it over into the proposed layout. But I'm assuming by what is shown here that the Antonellis do not want Mr. Fielding to drive on their driveway. Is that correct, Brian?
No, that's not correct. The way we approached this initially was that we would give Mr. Fielding the rights to use the improved driveway, roadway. But through discussions with Mr. Fielding, his preference was to kind of give him his own independent access off to the side. So what you see here comes as a result of discussions with Mr. Fielding where we've off-centered the improved roadway and left him 20 feet off to the south side. We are showing tree clearing up to the property line. I told Rodney that you know, the Antonellis would clear the right of way portion on his side as part of the development. And then he could address any of it. But no, it wasn't that the Antonellis didn't want him on the driveway. That's how we approached it originally, but that was Mr. Fielding's preference.
Okay, well, how do we, how do we know or do we care, is it going to be up to Mr. Fielding to construct his right of way in such a way that it does not impact the paved driveway that Antonelli is going to use? Or that it will not impact the Amato property which abuts to the south? What evidence is there on the plan that shows how that's going to be done? Or is it going to be up to, left up to him to make those arrangements and satisfy people on both sides?
Well, obviously you can't impact the Amatos to the south without approval and authorization. My discussions with Mr. Fielding are that you know, there are a number of things he needs to do to be able to use that so-called Woods Road. It hasn't, you know, it's barely passable on foot. Certainly passable by vehicle. It's, it's quite overgrown. So there are a number of issues he needs to address. You know, physically improving that wetlands. Dealing with conservation being one of them, because there are a number quite a bit of wetlands in the back of that lot. So I, I've just pointed that out to him, you know, before he gets too far along. He needs to look at some of those issues. Can he and will he be able to physically improve that road to even be able to use the relocated right of way in Antonelli Way? There's to get to his property and back. Right now he accesses it on, on Hannah's Lane. You know, so he, he has that as an access, but I know he would like to be able to use this as an access as well. He's just got to get everything addressed that he needs to do, abutters, wetlands issues, things like that.
How about the actual access to the right of way off of Old Onset Road? It would appear that no matter what he does, he's going to be cutting across the paved driveway that Antonellis will have.
Yeah, and they have no objection to that. They have no objection to that. I mean, we can clarify that further, but they have no objection to that.
Is he going to have to get a, a separate curb cut permit? In order to do that? How's that going to be handled with the town? Old Onset Road is a townway. It's going to have a curb cut permit for Antonellis Construction. Does that mean a separate curb cut permit from the town to build the right of way for Mr. Fielding?
He would probably require some, I mean, there's no utility connection that proposed, but the physical driveway, he would need to secure whatever permits he needs for that for the agricultural operation.
Is that, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me that the question of how that access is going to be built impacts the town, it impacts the Antonellis. It would seem to me that there should be at least some definition of what would be built there, how it would be built. So that everybody's on the same page. Right now it's I understand it's simply a right of way. But nevertheless, there has to be some significance given to the fact that he will be disrupting both the Amatos and the Antonellis if he begins to build that. And there needs to be some measure, I think, taken somewhere along the line that their rights are protected here. Not sure how much detail it needs, but it needs enough, I would think, so that there's not going to be any kind of a concern later on the down the road when everything is said and done.
Are you just at this point, you're just granting him an easement?
Yes, where the, the section of Woods Road that would be interrupted for the home construction, we're relocating that into the right of way that we're creating. To Charlie's point, we could show something on revised plans. Obviously, we need to revise plans with his comment letter, so we could show some improvements in that 20-foot right of way, gravel improvement surface. Coincide with the improved pavement surface.
Yeah, it's not really identified right now unless it's going to be across Antonelli's Way.
Yeah, we can show, we can reflect something on the revised plans.
Yep. So at this particular time, you're looking to address that and Charlie's comments and continue is?
Yeah, if we can get any feedback that anyone has tonight, we have Charlie's review letter. I'm sure he'll have more to offer once he gets to digest the variance list as well. So we can get Charlie's comments addressed through plan revisions and narrative responses and if any of the other members have comments that they have tonight, we'll get those listed and addressed as well.
All right. Brian, this is Richard. Help me understand. I'm looking, I'm looking at your screen now. And I see Woods Road coming in from the bottom right.
Yep.
And it goes across the new, the new way and into the front yard of, of the proposed building. Is that, are we going to move that, that dotted, that, that dotted pathway there to be right there?
Correct. That's the intent, to relocate about 90 feet of that Woods Road into Antonelli Way, correct.
All right. And you, and the map will be updated to reflect that?
Yeah, we'll show the physical improvement that Charlie's talking about, yep.
All right. So there won't be any easement across their front yard?
Correct.
You got it. Thank you.
Brian?
Yep.
Brian, can you hear?
Yep.
Is that a working bog currently?
Yes.
And so the other side of the bog is where all the cranberries are coming in and out in the, in October, I assume?
The other side of the bog?
Yeah.
Yeah, he uses, currently uses Aunt Hannah's Lane. What you see here is, is bordering vegetated wetlands. The bogs are several hundred feet further back than shown here.
Could I back, who is, who's speaking right?
This is Russell, Russell Motto.
Okay, I didn't recognize the voice, sorry.
That's all right. So I guess my question is, are the Antonellis, is, is the property being residential now going to have tractor trailers going through their road, which is basically their driveway?
It's quite possible that, you know, if Mr. Fielding is able to overcome some of the other limitations, wetlands and how close it is to the abutting properties. It's quite possible there will be, you know, cranberry trucks and things of that using this property. You know, this physical access, yes.
Because I think that the other end is more of a straight shot for the tractor trailers, whereas this is very residential with mostly newer homes. And I would, I would think that if I lived there, I would want the, the large trucks to stay on the other end, even though there's an access here. You know, is there any way we could address that? With the board? What do you think?
It's not under our jurisdiction at this time for the subdivision that's being proposed.
Okay.
Ken, could I, Charlie, this is Charlie, could I speak to that for just a minute? It, it may become clearer if with a template for turning movements for a tractor trailer, questions would be answered very quickly. My guess is that with knowing what the width of Old Onset Road is and the amount of turning radius that a tractor trailer would need to even get onto the right of way and then make the turn running parallel to the boundary, the way that the remaining Woods Road is shown. Physically, it may be impossible to put a tractor trailer in there. So it might
Well, Mr. Fielding has worked out that exercise. But if he finds when and if this gets built, that he's unable to accommodate that. Then Aunt Hannah's Lane is available for the larger truck traffic. Which, you know, that property has been using for, for many, many years now.
Yeah. My only point, Brian, is that it would I think it would be obvious that it would impact the pavement proposed for Antonellis. And so it would, if, if he's thinking or anybody's thinking that you possibly could use this for tractor trailers, the way to put it to bed would be to put the template on it to see whether or not it's physically possible without running all over the, the driveway access for Antonelli. Or whether it might actually possibly encroach at that southeast corner where there's going to be a sharp bend in that Woods Road relocation. So that would answer the question.
That goes to one of the comments you, that I quickly saw in your review letter is you know, about the profile we show for the, for the roadway. And we are showing, you know, four inches of pavement because we are allowing for the possibility that trucks may be crossing that driveway.
Then I, I would think that it would be appropriate in that case to to delve enough deeply, enough into it to where you'll be able to supply the answers for how much of an impact it might have on either Antonellis or Amato to the south. Because clearly a tractor trailer takes an awful lot more turning radius than a single axle truck would ever take.
Correct.
George, that's all I have on that particular question.
All right. It is a public hearing. If there's anyone there that wishes to comment.
Hi there, this is Kate Foster. Can you hear me?
Yeah, what was the name again?
Kate Foster.
Okay.
Hi, I'm one of the neighbors that live close to this parcel lands. And my questions are just a little less technical than what you're dealing with right now. And so I've talked with some of the neighbors that surround that parcel. And I guess everyone has sort of questions because we're under the impression that this is going to be one house that will be built on this five acres. But I guess the word subdivision is making people wonder here. Could there be more than one house built on this five acre parcel?
Well, just to clarify, and I don't know if you can see the plan. There's inadequate frontage along Old Onset Road for this, for a house lot. So what they've proposed is that Antonelli's Way that you see on the plan, which would have adequate frontage for one lot, for one, one residential home. The reason it's called a subdivision is because we are we are creating it by creating a subdivision roadway.
Okay.
And if, as this goes on and you go through the waivers, they will look to build something that more closely resembles a driveway. And there's no, there's nothing on the plans in front of us that would suggest more than one lot and I think more than one structure. And I think the wetlands issue would also prevent that, but I, I could be I could be wrong on that score.
This, George, this proposal, as we're seeing it now, is a one, one, one property, one house on a five acre lot. And to do a second one would require a whole, a whole new subdivision plan. Isn't that, isn't that true? So to answer Ms. Foster's question, the, the answer is the plan that is up for consideration only allows one home.
So then if they wanted to build a second home on the lot, they would have to apply again to the board for some type of I'm sorry, I don't know what this is called, variance or something to put another?
They would have to, they would have to submit another subdivision plan.
Okay.
Clearly they would need to create a roadway to get back there.
And so what is this circle that's in the back of the map there, that 150 square foot radius? What is that for?
That's called the lot shape factor, where you have to draw a lot equal to the frontage required. It's to prevent the creation of strange shaped lots in order to gain like in one particular case, we had hockey stick shaped lots to gain the frontage and area they needed for home construction.
Ah, I see.
This lot shape factor demonstrates that they do have a proportional area, but it doesn't, it doesn't indicate that that's where they have to build a house.
I see.
They can build a house anywhere they can get proper setbacks and clear of wetlands and, and access to it. Doesn't, doesn't have to go where the shape factor is.
Oh, great. I just have one final question. So if they did submit another subdivision plan to you in the future for another property, would the neighbors get notified?
Yes.
They would.
It would be the same process he's going through now.
Okay, so the abutters would get notified?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good questions.
Is there anyone else out there? No, I guess then we would look to our first August meeting. Is that the public hearings we have for town meeting? uh, our first August meeting. Is that the public hearings we have for town meeting?
Yeah.
No, that's the 17th.
The 17th.
The 10th is the first Monday, the first Monday meeting in August. I just uh, how's the agenda look for that, Ken? It's, it's light enough. They can take this as well. Okay. And I would look for a motion to continue to August 10th, 7 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
I'm sorry, 6 o'clock, sorry.
Still moved.
Mission, motion made by Richard. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Richard says aye.
I lose mic or am I just on the wrong screen?
Michael's there, but he's muted.
Ah.
Can you hear me?
I hear you. Would you like to second? To continue?
Yeah, I seconded.
And you voted aye.
Well, I think Russell seconded, sorry. But yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, unanimous. Very good. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Night.
Thanks, Brian.
Night, Brian.
Night, Charlie. I, off from memory, the agenda was pretty light this evening. What's, what's next, Ken? Next thing is planning board representative on, representation on the CIRPAD and Capital Planning Committee. I hear there's a plan.
There's something going on. Let, let me, um, there's been some discussions and um, Mike, uh, Mike King, I'll, I'll start and correct me if I got anything wrong, but Mike and I have attended um, a CIRPAD meeting and Jim Manese had brought up that the planning board needs a representative at the capital planning committee. And um, Mike, Mike and I haven't talked directly on this, but through Alan, I think we have in the current proposal that I'm aware of is that Michael represent the planning board on the CIRPAD uh, committee. I will represent the planning board on the capital planning committee. And if we agree to do that, then Michael and I will then name each other as alternates to our respective committees in case we need uh, someone to backfill for us. Uh, did I get that right, Mike?
Yes, sir. Very accurate.
So um, that's the plan, and we wanted to bring it to this board uh, for discussion and approval.
Uh, has this been broached with either of the two uh, agencies, CIRPAD or Capital Planning about sharing the duties?
It was, the plan, um, no, it hasn't to be, to answer your question directly. Um, the plan was, is that once we were appointed as the primary representatives from the planning board to those respective committees, we would then work with the chairperson to make sure we could do that.
Okay. You know, I don't have a problem with it. It's uh, sounds like in this day and age, you kind of do have to share duties. It's difficult trying to hit all these places.
It does. So uh, any other discussion on that? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve that plan.
All right ahead.
Make a motion that the planning board uh, appoint Mike, Michael King to the CIRPAD committee and Richard Swenson to the capital planning committee uh, effective immediately.
Um, yeah, okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I guess I probably should second that, Eric.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sounds unanimous.
Good.
Very good. Thanks, guys. I don't know if you were able to listen into CIRPAD the other night. I couldn't uh, I think Mike King was on board, but uh.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I was not.
I listened to it.
I wanted to uh, hear the cannabis discussion, but I couldn't, couldn't find my way in the door.
The uh, the, the audio was really kind of scattered that, and it was tough to follow anyway.
Yep. All right, what do you get next, Ken? That's it.
Hey, Ken?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ken, Charlie. Hey, when you send me the uh, information for the next uh, video conference that we have, uh, include the Zoom link with it, would you? Because that may be the reason why I can't see any of the video. Because when I go to it, it puts me as the host and I'm not the host. So all I am is a hanger-on here. But if you include the link, the full length of the link that I can click on, that maybe get me at least into the uh, video portion of the, of the program, so to speak.
It's always in the agenda, Charlie.
We could always nominate Charlie to be the host.
No, no, no. No, I wasn't included on the agenda. It generally, it generally is, uh, you know, it's a blue, blue line there that indicates what it is, but the agenda that I got doesn't have anything on it. Well, yes, it does. Oh, yeah, wait a minute, up at the top, yeah. Okay, maybe I should have just gone to the agenda and clicked on it from that.
That's how I get in, Charlie.
Yeah, that's probably the way. I didn't think about that part. Yeah, all right. I'll do that next time.
Uh, one of the questions I had for the board was, uh, would you like to return to live meetings?
I would not. This is Richard. I would much, I feel strongly that I think the.
Yeah, I, I would have to, I, I would have to second.
You fell apart there, Mike. Lost your uh, audio. Wait a minute. I'm not getting any audio at the moment.
I can hear you.
Oh, there you are.
I think we lost Mike. Mike and I had a Mike and I ran in, ran into each other at Lowe's the other day. We talked a little about this and that I feel strongly that um, the Zoom meetings, normally we actually, these work very well. I think the screen sharing is a really valuable feature that makes us more productive. And Michael was in, in agreement with me. I, I just see no advantage or no, no purpose at all in meeting face to face and taking additional risk health-wise when there's no need to.
Well, it sounds like that's, uh, majority of the board feels that way, at least as he thinks so.
How, how, how do you feel about it, George?
I, I would, I would rather go back to a live meeting so we can look at plans firsthand and and have an o, more open public hearing process. Maybe in the next meeting or two, we go to a combination of the two where where some people participate remotely and some in person.
As we would be wearing masks, I assume, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you couldn't maintain it, it would, I think inside a public building, you have to anyway.
Yeah, yep, okay.
But uh, we can continue on this way. I just wanted to put it out there. One of the things that we can do is I can try to get the uh, the plans to you well enough in advance. You can look at them on your computers. Or if you need a hard copy, let me know and we can get an extra hard copy sent around and mailed around to people so they have copies of the plans before the meeting. We've been putting up the uh, electronic files of the plans on the project, uh, like on the planning board, the website.
Is everybody, is everybody? Is everybody seeing the uh, the documentation that uh, Ken's office is putting on the planning board website under the projects sheet? Under the projects tab, I should say?
I was able to see him, Richard.
I have to get feed on that. I got, Richard, I got your direct email. I looked at that and I get Ken's emails direct, but where should I look for what you're talking about?
Let me show you. On the town website. Town website on the planning board page.
Okay.
There's a menu on the side. It said, and one of them says planning board projects. And if you touch on that, you'll get the uh, the files that have been submitted for the projects before the board at this time.
Okay.
When you set that out before I tried to go directly there, that's where I screwed up. So go to the town website first and planning board and
All right.
I'll give it another shot.
Yeah, Russell, the agendas are there, the minutes are there. That's where I go like tonight. I went there, brought up the minutes page, the Zoom link was on it, clicked on the Zoom. I'd already been left side and and I've gone through a lot of the documents there for tonight's meeting, so.
Okay.
Uh, you had mentioned, uh, Richard, you wanted uh, the Wareham Village on the agenda. But.
Um, I, I did. I went through that last meeting, George, uh, well enough. We're going to have it on the 17th at the public hearing as well.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And just so everybody knows, there's a um, a public session to review the um, zoning proposal this Thursday at noon and next Thursday at 5:30. I've got, I've got announcements to that effect. I'm speaking as a WRA personnel. Uh, announcements to that fact, effect all over Facebook. It's been in the papers. Working with the Wareham Village Association to try to get uh, them all up to speed, so just so you know.
Richard, is there written up to where we could see it online?
Um, yeah, um, well, let me ask you, Charlie. I
Yeah.
Every, every time I give the presentation, I make, I make tweaks to it based on comments that people make. And I'm worried about um, different versions getting out there. Maybe that's a needless worry. Um, I do track the versions in the document itself to note the changes I've made. I tell, how about this? I'm going to do one Thursday. Any, any changes? And I'll, I'll have it posted on the uh, planning board or on the WRE website Friday. Uh, assuming I make a couple tweaks to it based on Thursday's meeting.
Okay, so we could see whatever you've got if you post it on that website on Thursday as well?
Um, on Friday, I'll have it posted that you could download the document. Uh, Charlie, I'll share it with you uh, one on one if you like.
Well, I was just thinking it would be helpful to see what it, what it says, what's being proposed down there, that's all. In order to be able to make any comments, I need to be able to see it a little bit.
I hear you. Um, I struggle though with, because without, if I put it out there, here's, here's what happens to me and and talk me through, talk me down from my ledge here, in that I put it out there and people read it and totally misinterpret it when they're reading it. Uh, I'm not pointing at you, Charlie, when I say that. Uh, with, without it being presented with questions and answers and explanations, people read stuff like that and, and I don't know how they do it sometimes, but they misinterpret it greatly.
Isn't that the risk we take these days? Everything gets misinterpreted. But it's got to be out there for other people to be able to see and at least uh, analyze what's there for themselves and be able to make uh, make some um, enlightened opinion as to whether or not they like it or don't like it.
Sure, I hear you. I will post it Friday, Charlie, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Yep.
Anything further this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Made by Richard, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, what is it? Uh, 7:10 roughly?
7:02.
Yep, 7:02.
Clock's fast. Good evening, everyone.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Good night, guys.